Come on.
Yep.
There we go. Are we good now? Okay. We're good? Okay. So first of all, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out this morning to attend the meeting. I know there's a lot of expectations with regard to path forward, particularly with the search for a new school superintendent. So I want to thank everyone for coming out today. Appreciate your interest, your support, and your commitment to the students and the faculty at the school. Unfortunately, we were made aware this morning that we've got some gaps in the confirmation process for members being seated on the board. And unfortunately, what we've been advised by Jamar Ennis, who's the governor's representative on the board, is that two of our key board members, Sherry Crosby and Mr. John Davis, have yet to be confirmed by the Senate. So unfortunately, they're not able to participate as members of the board today. So one of the items we'd like to address during the meeting today is how do we follow up on that, address that concern, get these individuals seated as soon as possible so that we can reconvene as a board and continue operation to support the school, the staff, and the children at the school. So the intent, before we officially start this meeting, is to help everyone be aware of that situation. We do plan to convene the meeting. However, by statute, the board is not able to cast any votes. Can't make any decisions without a quorum. So we obviously want to comply with state law. So we do want to go ahead and convene the meeting, but the conversation at the meeting will be limited to information only without the ability to cast any votes or make any decisions. So what I'm going to do in a second is go ahead and open the meeting in interim president Sherry Crosby's absence. Very pleased that she's still in attendance this morning, along with Mr. John Davis. So we're looking forward to hearing their comment during the meeting, during the public comment period. And we certainly welcome their comments, concerns, or questions for the record so that we can follow up. So I think that is one of the two items that I consider high priority this morning. And then the second is our search process for the superintendent. We are fortunate this morning to have representatives from SSA consultants who conducted the last superintendent search. I think the board was very pleased with that work process and very pleased with the outcome. So the experience that they bring us from the previous search, as well as what the timeline might look like for the new search, would be valuable information for the board, for the faculty, and other members in attendance this morning. So I'd like to make sure that as we open the meeting, that we go through the agenda as it's been presented, but to make sure that we cover these two items. So having preface with that, I'd like to go ahead and kick off the meeting this morning. So making best efforts to comply with my fundamental knowledge on public meeting law. I'd like to call the meeting to order and look at item number three, which is review and consideration of employee grievance matters. There's an option here to go into executive session. However, as we've been made aware, we're not able to vote to go into executive session. Jamar, you had a comment?
Thank you. Just as a point of information, we still could do a roll call just to, for the record, just to take attendance of any members and any guests and just acknowledge formally that we just don't have quorum based on the reasons you stated.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that. All right. Let's proceed with the roll call vote. Do we have someone from staff that typically leads that? Okay, so what I'm hearing is the person on staff that typically leads the roll call vote is not in attendance this morning. So what I'd just like to do is just go around the table.
I could try to take a, and I'll pull up the membership on the Louisiana Board's Commission Room so I can just read out the names.
Okay, that'd be great. Jamar, why don't you lead us in the roll call?
Marie. Marie Ennis?
Is Marie Ennis in attendance this morning? Hearing nothing. I'm sorry.
Yes, I am here.
Thank you, Marie. Thank you. Okay, Maria's.
You were asking. That's why I delayed in answering and responding, but I am Maria. Yes.
Very good. Thank you so much. And thank you for coming out this morning. I know you're always here, and we appreciate that. So we've got one in attendance. Mr. Ennis?
All right, Dr. Jessica White.
Present.
Thank you, sir.
Vicki Smith.
Present.
Catherine Presley.
Is there any response from Catherine Presley? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Ennis?
Okay. Mr. Ronnie Morris?
Present.
Okay, and I, myself, I'm here. Jamar Ennis. And just for the sake, I will call Mr. Kenny Davis.
Right. And we've acknowledged that Mr. Davis has not been confirmed as yet.
Right. And there's still, but he's here.
And however, he is present. Thank you.
And Ms. Sherry Crosby.
And also, we recognize Ms. Crosby has not been confirmed as yet. However, she is present. Okay, is that the total roll call?
Yes. And I believe this is the appropriate time to acknowledge any guests that are at the table. We do have board counsel present.
Ross Dooley on behalf of, we're outside counsel for the board with Rodell Parsons. Ross Dooley with the law firm Rodell Parsons here is outside counsel for the board.
Okay, and I understand Whitney Green is going to be representing the district legal counsel. Is that correct? Okay, we can confirm if she's available. So, Mr. Ennis, I counted five in attendance. What is the total membership of the board? What's the count?
There's 12 appointments and five voting members present.
Okay, so we would need seven for quorum with a membership of 12. We're at five, so we're short of quorum. So we've officially documented that we do not meet quorum. And we understand that if Ms. Crosby and Mr. Davis were eligible, that would be two additional, would get us to seven, and we would have been able to make quorum. So just want to get that down for the record. Okay, so continuing beyond that, next item I have is review and consideration of employee grievance matters. Possible executive session. So we're not able to vote on going to executive session. So there is no ability to do that. So unless there's any public comment on that one, I'd like to move to the next item on the agenda. Hearing none. I'm sorry. We do have public comment from Ms. Crosby. You would like to comment on the employee grievance matter item. Is that correct?
No, I apologize. Not on that item.
No comment there. We're going to move to the next item. Next item is consideration of formal resolution approving Attorney General request for legal issues. Again, we're not able to vote on that, whether or not we would go to Attorney General. So I would open up that for public comment. If there's any public comment on that item. Okay, hearing none. I'm going to go to the next item. The next item is consideration and appointment of the interim superintendent. Possible executive session. If necessary, return to open session and board vote on appointment of interim. So we're obviously not able to take a vote. However, we are able to have a public comment and discussion on the matter. So I've chatted with several board members and counsel prior to convening the meeting and identified that we do have representatives here this morning from SSA consultants, again, who took us through the superintendent search process last time. I think members, again, members were very pleased with that work process and obviously with the outcome. The board voted unanimously to confirm Dr. Martin for the position, and I think the board is pleased with the outcome of that appointment. So at this time, I would ask representatives from SSA consultants to come to the table and provide us with public comment, sharing with us a little history about the last search, sort of a brief summary of that process, and then what that would look like going forward for the current search. Could you please come forward, identify yourself, please?
Maybe.
You could sit at my table, my seat, Rudy. There's only one microphone? Yes, I've been advised that we do need the microphone so that they can record it. It works better. So if you could take a seat at my chair, then there's a microphone there, and we can make sure that we have it on record.
Good. Can everyone hear me?
Rudy, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I've been advised that the best place for you to share with the group would be at the podium.
Sure. Not quite as tall as Mr. Morris. Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to address you this morning regarding the proposed superintendent search. SSA consultants, as Mr. Morris mentioned, was hired by the board to conduct the previous superintendent search. My name is Rudy Gomez, and I'm one of the partners at SSA. SSA is a general management consulting firm based here in Baton Rouge. That has been around since the mid-1970s or so. And we do a variety of different general management consulting projects, one of which is executive searches. And we have been asked again to prepare a proposal, which we did, and have submitted it to the board to conduct the upcoming search if approved. And I'll take you through the basic process of how we go about searches, the different component parts of our process, and would be then glad to address any questions that you might have. Our methodology for the search has four separate phases. And each of the phases have three distinct components of work. So doing the math, that's 12 different pieces of work divided up into. divided up into four, uh, basic phases. The first phase is what we call preparation. And, uh, as you, some of you, and I see some familiar faces here, participated in that, uh, preparation component. Uh, we start with gathering input from key stakeholder groups. Uh, and the, the special school district has several different, uh, stakeholder groups, uh, that it serves. And last time we did this, all of them wanted to speak and wanted their input about what we need in the new superintendent. So we, we did a variety of things, we had some public meetings, we had some forums where people could send in information. I think we did a few surveys as well. But it's just providing stakeholder groups an opportunity to weigh in, uh, and express their opinions about, uh, ideally what, what we need, uh, in a superintendent. We, we then worked with a, a committee of the board, and, uh, I think Mr. Morris chaired that committee. I don't know if it was a personnel committee or a search committee, but that's typically how we work with a board, uh, whether it's a, a public or private entity to do searches. Usually there's a committee, I think there were three members of that committee last time, and all of our work was coordinated, uh, through that committee. And, and really that just allows for efficiency. Otherwise, we would have to convene the board and, and ask the board step by step for, for approval to go forward. Uh, and, and, uh, we, we would, uh, that, that process works really well, and, and we would hope to do that again. Uh, we would then meet with the, the, uh, committee, and, uh, show them the input we got, received from the stakeholder groups. We would also talk with them, uh, about, uh, looking at the, the, the profile of the executive to be hired for this, the superintendent in this case. Of course, we have a lot of that information from last time. Uh, and that, so we would, we would start there and, and ask for updates to that, refinements to that. Because of, the, the endpoint of this preparation, first phase, is to have that finalized, approved profile of, of who we're searching for. What does that person, background, characteristics, strengths, uh, needs to be? Because we'll use that for, for all of our advertising and all this, which is in the second component. So that's the, that's the first component, is this preparation phase. And what we wind up with, again, is a profile, uh, that we're going to go advertise for and search for. Uh, and the second phase is advertise, network, and recruit. Uh, so we take that profile and we, we put it out there. And, uh, there, there are a lot of different groups we can advertise with, online, stakeholder groups, associations, different groups that are relevant. Uh, we prepare, uh, documents that define, uh, the position that's open, uh, and, and typically the timeframe that we're working within, uh, and we, we, we put that out. And then we start, uh, networking and recruiting, talking with groups, uh, taking recruiting calls. And we, we post, uh, that position, uh, and we start taking applications. People typically would be asked to, to provide, uh, an application of interest, and, and we start to receive those, uh, from those postings, from that advertising, from that networking. Uh, which leads us to phase three, uh, which is candidate screening and interview. So we, we, we would take, uh, and usually there's a, a step process where we would screen candidates, uh, at SSA, just to see, uh, typically when you do this kind of search, you will get a lot of applicants who don't meet the basic requirements of, of the job. And so we screen those out first, uh, and then we, we wind up with a list of people that, that clearly do meet the, the, the written, uh, qualifications, and we start working with the, the committee then to, to get that list in shape. Uh, we do screening interviews that we conduct typically by Zoom. Our teleconferences and in-person, if they're, if they're here in the area. We conduct reference checks. We have a few instruments, leadership instruments, that we also like to utilize at this point to get a sense of leadership style and approach to managing that people have. So all of that's done in, in that third phase. And then the, the final phase, phase four, is, uh, the finalist. The, the final phase, phase four, uh, would be the finalist interviews, so we narrow the list to a shortlist. Uh, we conduct those interviews typically a shortlist. Last time, as you recall, uh, we had three candidates that were brought here for about a two-day process, uh, of, of meeting staff, seeing the facilities, meeting with the board, going through interviews and, uh, meetings. So the board could be prepared to, uh, have them present, uh, in public meeting, which they did. Uh, and then the board voted and, and made a final selection from there. And that, and that's a basic process. The key, I think, is the committee of the board to work with us, to, as we go through this process. Because we, we wind up with 100 questions, and, and, uh, questions that we have, questions that, that come to us in that process. And so having a, a committee of the board, uh, there to, to work with us through each of the steps, to make sure we, we stay on the right path, uh, is important. Time-wise, uh, it's typically 90 to 120 days, uh, for this type of process. And it, it really, uh, depends on, on the candidates you get and time, you know, getting them in. That, those last two phases typically take more time than the first two. But most of these, and, and we probably do a handful of high-level executive searches a year, and the, the typical timeframe is 90 to 120 days, you know, to accomplish that. And that's our basic process, I would, I, I don't know if there's any questions or anything, but I'd be glad to, to address any.
Thank you. Thank you, I'm not sure this one's working. I gotta turn it on, but I don't think it's working.
Testing.
Thank you, thank you. Great, uh, so I'm sure there's, there's going to be questions, uh, from folks in attendance, so I'm advised that the best way to work that, uh, obviously board members can speak from their seat, but if there's public comment, then we would ask you to come to, uh, the stage, and you could, uh, ask your question, and Mr. Gomez could respond from the podium. So I guess I would open the, the floor up to board members first. If any board members have any questions for Mr. Gomez, uh, Mr. Ennis?
Hi, good morning, Mr. Gomez. Thank you for being with us and, and coming to our meeting. Um, I wasn't on the board whenever, um, SSA was doing the search. So I would, I would like to see the, the applicants that have applied, just to get, kind of get a feel for, um, what, who applied, um, so, um, would it be possible to get, I guess, um, the work product from the last search?
I, I think so, sure. I, I don't know, I, I need to find out about the, the full range of the, the candidates, uh, there, but certainly all of the ones that, that wound up in the, as finalists, and all of that's on public record because they actually came here in front of the board. I, I'd need to find out about confidentiality of the, the people that applied and just got screened out right away. There were like 75 or 76.
Okay, uh, I mean the last, the three final candidates.
Oh, sure, yeah, we, we can definitely provide you that information. It's, as a matter of fact, it, it's all in the, the minutes of, of the, the board and all, but we could certainly provide that.
Now, uh, will you be submitting, um, like a, a proposal of some type, um, with your services and?
I think we did.
Okay.
There's a proposal document, I think, submitted to the board.
Okay, it's available, and we can, we can get it to you if you haven't received it as yet.
Okay, perfect. All right, well, look, um, do you have any questions from us? Board members? Uh, I know you probably see some new faces, I'm one of them.
Yes, and I, I, I see, uh, about half, I think, are new faces. Uh, I, I really don't, I, I'm, I'm familiar with, uh, the, the school district, uh, and, and its missions. And, uh, I, I've been through this process once with the board and the stakeholder groups, uh, represented here. And, and so we feel very comfortable. Uh, we think we had a very successful process last time and worked well with all the groups. And, and as you may recall, it, it was quite a bit of turmoil when we got here. Uh, and there was a lot of, a lot of concern about, uh, how that process would go and who would conduct it, and, and, uh, a, a lot of legitimate questions, real, real serious and important questions. And, uh, I, I thought we, we managed that together with the board and the stakeholder groups in a, in a proper way. I made sure everybody got to weigh in, uh, as, as they wanted to, uh, about the process and about the, the profile of the new superintendent. And, uh, I, I think we, we did a good search and, and wound up with some good candidates to present to the board. And I'm, I'm confident we can, we can do that again.
And you're, you're here in Baton Rouge, you're local?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you got a good appreciation for, um, the locale, the, uh, the district itself, and, okay, that's good.
We, we do, and, and personally, I, uh, I was on the, uh, this, the foundation board for the School for the Deaf back 20 years ago. And, and, uh, so, uh, and one of my wife's godchildren is a graduate of the School for the Deaf here, which was how I wound up on the board. And so I, I, I've got a sort of a long history, at least with the School for the Deaf, when it was the only thing here, uh, back that far. And, and now through the process we did a few years ago, the larger mission with the School for the Visually Repaired and the LSV, uh, the SSP.
Well, I look forward to the opportunity to, um, work with you, get to know you a little bit as we move forward in this process.
Well, we, we appreciate the opportunity again. We, we enjoyed working with the board and, and, uh, the school, uh, last time, and we would, uh, appreciate that opportunity again.
Any other board members would like to comment at this time? Okay, hea- hearing no comment from, uh, board members, I would open up to the general public. If there's anyone from the general public that has questions for Mr. Gomez, then this will be your opportunity. Okay, uh, Mr. John Davis, Mr. Davis, would you come forward and you can speak from this mic, and Mr. Gomez could remain at the podium?
I sincerely apologize, my friend.
Hello, my name is Kenny Davis. And three years ago, I was on the committee, the Personnel Committee, and, uh, along with Kristy Flynn, uh, with SSA. And so we worked beautifully together, and it was amazing. Because once we sent out, um, I think we, we received about over 80 applicants at that time, over 80 applicants, which is not normal. And so in the past, we've always received small numbers, but over 80 was amazing. And so we had to go through all those applicants, and we chose three of the top applicants. And I do trust SSA with this process, and this is from my experience.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, the floor's still open for any other public comment, and I promise to handle the microphone appropriately this time. Any other questions for Mr. Gomez at this time? All right, hearing none. Uh, I'd like to thank Mr. Gomez for coming out today. Obviously, we're not in a position today to take a vote, uh, on, on any particular service provider to conduct the search. Uh, this will be something that'll have to be brought up at the next meeting, so we're, we're at a pause right now in the work process. But we thank Mr. Gomez and his team at SSA Consultants for coming out today and, and sharing with us the background, the experience, and, and what our expectations could be going forward relative to the timeline for conducting the search. So thank you again.
Thank you.
So, so on the same topic, given that we are not able to, uh, continue, uh, with the search process, and the constraint is that we're not able to seat a quorum, I think it's appropriate that we address that matter. So at this time, what I'd like to do is ask a board member, Jamar Ennis, uh, to address the board and the audience with the immediate concern, uh, so that everyone clearly understands the situation and we get it on public record. Uh, and, and then if Mr. Ennis could, uh, share with us his thoughts with regard to potential paths, paths forward uh, for how we can, uh, quickly address, uh, this concern, uh, get, get the, uh, members seated again, confirmed and seated again on the board, so we can conduct normal business. And then after Mr. Ennis completes his comments, then, uh, we would take questions from board members, uh, to Mr. Ennis, and then following that, we would take public comment, uh, back to Mr. Ennis. So, Mr. Ennis?
All right, luckily, I'm just a little bit taller than Ronnie, so I, uh, I don't have to deviate downward with the microphone. Hi, Jamar Lanier Ennis, I'm a member of this board, uh, and I work for the Office of the Governor, Disability Affairs. Um, it has been brought to my attention that, um, due to a state statute, particularly Louisiana Revised Statute, 20, Title 24, Article 14, um, Section K, prohibits at least two of our members from being moved forward, uh, to continue membership. It's not a permanent deal, it just states that members must be confirmed by the Senate in a specified amount of time. For some reason, we don't know, we're going to find out what happened, why it happened, why it didn't get done. It's, the Louisiana State Senate must confirm, make these appointments and confirm them by the closing session. This year, it was June 12th. So the Senate, Louisiana Senate had until June 12th to, to confirm, um, two appointees, which didn't get done. So by operation of law, um, we can have those board members be reconsidered during the next legislative session. So only members can be confirmed during regular sessions, so that's, that's state law. So it's not fatal, it's just a, a, a serious inconvenience at this point in time. It is, is my position that the way that we address the situation immediately is to submit applications for qualified members who, who may be duly qualified, uh, with understanding that the, the two members that have to sit out for a year can be reappointed next year. So we just need to focus on getting quorum, right? So if we can get sufficient members to obtain quorum, we can, uh, conduct business. we can conduct business in an expeditious fashion. That's my approach to it. I would love to entertain some thoughts around that, to see who can possibly apply to kind of serve in an immediate role so that we can conduct business as the board should. To the extent anybody have questions, look, I'm not boards and commissions, and I'm not, I don't work for the Senate, but I will be happy to take any questions and answer them to the extent possible.
So I would open that up to board members first. If there's any board members that had a question for Mr. Ennis, this will be your opportunity. Okay, hearing none, I'd open it up to the public, give the public an opportunity to comment and/or ask Mr. Ennis any questions. Ms. Crosby, you want to step forward, please?
Good morning, board. I am disappointed that I was just informed today and why I was not informed before. I mean, we've gone through this process for six months and this information was held, and I wanted to share this information with the board that changes have been made. And then to actually tell us today has really perplexed me, and I'm very disappointed. So my question to you, Ennis, is that every time that the governor has been replaced, so for the past six months, you have to, do you have to share this information with the board? How does this work? Please let us know.
Hey, that's a fair question. So it's, so the governor's office, they duly submit the applications. Anybody that applies for a board goes to boards and commissions. So it's my appreciation that your application and Mr. Kenny's application was submitted and was moved forward. So our office did everything we could to follow the rules, follow the process. But ultimately, it's the Louisiana State Senate that does these confirmations. So the problem is that there's not a system here that tracks the applicants within the special school district. So I don't know if this is something that the board needs to be more vigilant on, to have an appointed person on the board to make calls whenever the time gets a little short to say, hey, we're still waiting on confirmation on this member, where are we at in the process? I don't know if this is a staff concern within the special school district. But maybe both parties, the board and the district, can both create a tracking tool, a spreadsheet, so that we can remain vigilant that this doesn't happen again. But June 2nd, I'm sorry, June 12th, no matter when we were informed, we couldn't stop it. There's nothing we could have done as a governor's office. This, we submitted the applications, that's all that I know, and I can only speak for what I know. But what we're gonna do is we're gonna find out what happened. We were gonna, I gave the contact information to board council of the Senate, of the person who's responsible, maybe they lost paperwork, maybe they didn't get the paperwork in time. We don't know, I can't speculate. But the thing moving forward is to make sure that this doesn't happen again. So we're open to suggestions of processes that the board can take, that the district can take to ensure that things move as they should. But I can tell you, this is the first time this happened with other boards. There's four hundred-something boards in our state. And you could imagine if only one person's handling the paperwork, which seems to be the case. But that's not an excuse, we just need to stay on top of it and be vigilant about it, bottom line.
Ms. Crosby, you had other questions?
I would like to add. Okay, and I am aware that Katie Shepherd and Christie Flynn, they both have emailed your office to see the status of the vacant positions. And they've been reaching out, and no one has responded to either one of them. And it's been six months. We have been following up, and there's been no response. So this is embarrassing. You should have responded once you receive the email out of courtesy.
So here's what I'll say today, next time, include me in the email. So I can be vigilant, make calls, make some inquiries. But I don't know that these things are happening because I'm not included. I'm a member of this board, just like everyone else, and it's very frustrating that things can't move forward. We're here, we have our good clothes on, we want to conduct business. So that's what I can say, just include me in the process. I can, I can help. But again, we just need to figure out a process where we can hold everybody accountable and make some calls, make some emails, send faxes, carry a pigeon, whatever, to get our message across and get updates.
I have a question. So again, I actually did CC you. So why would I CC you? What would be the reason for me to CC you? What is your role?
Well, I am a member of the governor's office. They're in, we work hand in hand with boards to, and it's a convenient thing where I can go to someone's office and make some calls. You're gonna have to tell me when you CC'd me in the email. Unfortunately, I don't know, so if you can bring that up, we can take a look at it. But
Thank you.
It's just one of those things where if I'm involved, I can help. It's just another hand on deck that can try to get us where we need to go.
Thank you, Ms. Crosby, for that comment, and thank you, Mr. Ennis, for the response. I think Mr. Davis has a question or comment. Mr. Davis, come forward, please.
Hello, everyone, again, my name is Kenny Davis. For the past three years, everything has proceeded fine until today. It's been very upsetting today. I've been attending a hundred percent of these meetings. And I showed up very motivated, and Sherry as well, she's attended a hundred percent, and I believe that. So I feel like this is, you know, a situation that has perplexed us. And so what have they been doing for the past six months or seven months? I mean, that's incredible. But I did receive an application, I filled it out, I CC'd it to John Harper, I believe. That's the person, I need to double check my emails. And I filed that information, and I think, I believe I have the certificate, but I'll have to check on my end. But I submitted to the board and commissions. And I will share my feelings about their actions. I am committed with this, and I want to wake them up. Thank you.
And Kenny, I greatly appreciate your response. Again, the root of the problem is, one, us tracking, making calls to the Louisiana Senate. Once it leaves boards and commissions, that's who is responsible for processing it so that it's considered during the regular session. That's the, that is the whole extent of what we're trying to get to the bottom of why the Louisiana State Senate did not process or confirm the applicants. Now, you will get reappointed, but it's gonna be next year. So that's the only situation where it's an inconvenience, it's a setback, but it's not fatal. So we want you on this board, we want you and Ms. Crosby on this board. It's just, we need to get to the bottom of what happened with the Louisiana State Senate. That's the bottom line. I wish I had better information to tell you, but all we can do is move forward and fix the problem.
Thank you for those comments.
One more, I have one more response. I just thought of another reason. So with the commission, the Board of Commissions, which level of priority do they focus on, other than us? I think that everyone, we should be equitable with this process, and they need to be transparent. And I believe in this. So that's just an additional thought I wanted to share. Thank you.
And that's fair. Look, I'm not, I don't work for boards and commissions. I'm sure that if you reach out to boards and commissions, like they have four hundred boards, and I'm sure all of them are equally as important. I can't tell you if there's tiers. I don't believe that they are. But again, the best thing that we can do is not destroy ourselves from within and create strong policies, procedures, to make sure that we follow up and stay on top of this. That's number, that's the number one key. Because I'm sure if we knew that this particular statute was in effect, and let me tell you, I'm not going to set myself up for failure as a member of the governor's office to step into a place where I know that there are some deficiencies. So that's just, look, and if anybody doesn't know by now, I have, look, I have skin in the game. I have two children that have disabilities, that are sped students. So this particular board is very important to me. So I want this board to be successful, but we're not gonna destroy ourselves from within. So we need to create some strong policies to ensure that we stay afloat no matter what happens. No matter how high the tide gets, we're gonna be swimming and floating and get where we need to get. So, but let's talk about how we can ensure this doesn't happen again. So I believe that a board member and appointed member who works for the district can work hand in hand to ensure that we have a simple tracking tool. It could be a sales spreadsheet where each member has a start date, an end date, what they need to where we can track it. That's how I've done it when I was running the statewide independent living council. Personally, I'm appointed to eight different boards. We, in my office, we supervise one board, and that's the Governor's Advisory Council Disability Affairs. So my deputy, he has a pretty lengthy process of ensuring that the members are doing their trainings, that they're staying on top of getting tax documents, whatever the Senate needs to ensure that their membership's confirmed. So I think that's the most prudent approach here. I get it, I'd be upset too, but we're gonna fix it. So that's really what I would say that we need to focus our energy on. So I would like for us to at least hold spots for Kenny and Sherry so that they could come back on the board as they should. But unfortunately, this is a thing that should have been caught. You know, so we can't get caught sleeping at the wheel again as a board. So I'm in this too. So let's not let it happen again.
Thank you, Mr. Ennis. I want to continue to open the floor up for public comment. If there's any other, anyone else who would like to comment, this will be your opportunity. Question, questions for Mr. Ennis?
I appreciate what Mr. Ennis has said. Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Delvick Yopiku, and I am the Executive Director of a Business and Finance here at SSD. I appreciate, and business, I appreciate what Mr. Ennis has said about keeping track and getting trackers and everything. The one thing that I want to say and bring to light is that when we are tracking things outside of the board, that appointed person that works for this agency, I think that it's very important that the entire board is included when we are communicating things out. I think that we have had change in staff, there have been different things that have happened. You know, we have someone that's over the board now, but that doesn't necessarily mean that everybody got the message. I think it's very important that the communication is strong so that when things are going awry, the board is aware. It was evident in our last meeting that some of the board members were not aware of things that was happening in the district. So it's very important, I just wanted to say that I think it's very important that if we're gonna go on this track, that we make sure that the communication is strong so that the board can be aware, so that they can be able to respond.
Thank you for that. Communication is obviously critical, and recognizing we have some special situations here that we have to work through as well. So thank you for that feedback. Any other public comment on this particular item? Opportunity to speak to Mr. Ennis. Yes, sir, Mr. Bourgeois. I'm sorry, Mr. Bourgeois is not here, I'm just reading the name. Please identify yourself for the board.
My name is Ross Dooley. I'm an attorney with Rodell Parsons. You might normally see my law partners Larry Rodell or Andre Bourgeois here, neither of which could be here today. Mr. Ennis has given me the contact information for Ms. Maria Lively, who is over the Senate Boards and Commissions Department. I'm gonna reach out to her personally, we're gonna find out what happened. And we will, of course, assist the board with any efforts it needs to make sure that this situation gets fixed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment on this item? Opportunity to address Mr. Ennis. All right, hearing none?
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, sir.
Anybody who's interested in applying for this board should apply. Anybody that believes they can make any difference should apply. That's gonna get us to the point where it goes, the application goes to boards commissioners, to commission and to the governor for consideration. That's really the only way that we can conduct business faster so we can do what we need to do for these kids in this school system. So if there's not any other questions, I'll close.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Am I free to leave?
Yes, sir, thank you. So let's talk about steps forward. So Mr. Ennis spoke quite well, I thought, about putting a work process in place to address this so we don't have a recurrence. So I think that's something that board would have to approve. We can work on what that proposal looks like, but it was something that the board would have to approve by vote. So I want to make sure we get that on record, that that's an expectation going forward, that we'll have a formal work process in place so that this situation doesn't reoccur. Secondly, with regard to Ross's comments and Mr. Ennis's comments on the follow-up, I would like to think that there's a workaround here, that we're not gonna have to wait until the full Senate convenes next year in order for this committee to convene appropriately. I would like to think that if we brought it to the appropriate level, the situation here, which is that not only can the committee not convene to make decisions going forward, the situation that the board is in is that not only do we not have enough members to possibly consider a quorum, but we don't have a sitting superintendent. We don't have a member of the board that is serving as president or vice president right now. So we've got a vacancy for the superintendent, we've got a vacancy for the board president, we've got a vacancy for the board vice president. We're fortunate that we do have an individual who's been working as the backfill for the previous superintendent. Appreciate Ms. Rawls in that role and continuing in that role so the school does have leadership going forward until we can get this situation addressed expeditiously. So I would ask that So I would, uh, ask that, uh, Mr. Bourgeois and Mr. Ennis work together to see if we can't, uh, approach, uh, state leadership at the appropriate level to see if there's not a workaround here, given the specific, uh, situation that we're in. Um, so gentlemen, if, if, if you'll take that, uh, I'd appreciate some acknowledgement, or if you have suggestions otherwise, I'd like to hear that as well, so that everyone attending has clear understanding of, of what path forward is. Ms., Ms. White?
Jessica White? So my question is, I know we can, we're saying that we're gonna consider, um, Mr. Davis and, um, Ms. Crosby for the next, next session. Um, is there a provision in the, in the board policy that allows for interim placement of board members?
I, I would direct that to Mr. Ennis.
I think following state laws, but, what, what we have to do. I don't know if, even if it's in our bylaws or, or policy procedures. Um, and I'll get with Board Counsel, and I'll even go look on Westlaw, look, look on my own personal resources. As an attorney, um, I'm, I'm licensed to practice in state and federal courts, um, at this kind of thing. So there's a workaround, we, we'll explore it. But, uh, I would like to, at least as a courtesy, include all of the board members to figure out, I guess, best options, uh, whatever plays that we have to run on this kind of thing. But it is my appreciation, if we can get just enough members to have quorum, we need to find that magic number, uh, get them appointed so we can agree on a time, place, um, to, to have a meeting and get some of these action items accomplished. Um, but for workaround, we can, we can look and see what's out there. Um, I, I'm all about creativity and reaching the finish line, even if it's something de novo, that's legal. Um, but right now, I don't have that information to, um, you know, but we'll explore.
Right.
I hope that answers the question.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So I, I think that what we're looking for right now is options, right? So if, if, uh, if you guys could work together on that, to come back to us with options, and once we have those options on the table, then we can consider, uh, you know, what, what's the best solution for the situation. Um, so if you guys will take that, I think that's our, our next step. Certainly, our highest priority is to gather this board again, um, so we can officially, uh, commit to a vendor to get the search started, and, and we can get the, uh, new superintendent in place. So, uh, we'll, we'll be looking to hear from you guys with regard to progress. And, and again, uh, we want to make sure we prioritize communication. So I would ask that, that you share that, uh, feedback with, um, with all members of the board, um, including, including, um, Mr. Davis and Ms. Crosby, uh, for their reference. Um, I, I actually, I'd like to go a little beyond that. I'd like to request that, um, given the urgency here, that you guys could provide a, the response within seven days. At, at least with an update, uh, of the situation. Not necessarily asking for final recommendation or anything like that, but, but at least, uh, an update in a timely manner so we have some appreciation for how, how our request is being processed. And, and at what level? I'd like to emphasize that, and at what level of, of state government. All right? Any other public comment on this particular item? All right, hearing none. Gonna go back to our agenda here, see if there's anything else we could possibly consider today. I'm going to Item Six, which is the, uh, search proposal. Obviously, we, we can't make any decisions there, and we've heard from, uh, SSA consultants. So I'm gonna go to the next item, which is, uh, Board Officer Elections and Bylaw Amendments. Uh, again, we're, we're not able to make any decisions here with regard to, uh, board officers. Um, but I, I would like to get clarification on one item here. I'm showing President and Vice President. There was, there was some discussion, uh, amongst board members earlier today about whether our bylaws include a provision for Secretary Treasurer or not. So, so I would ask Mr. Ennis and, uh, and Ross, if you would maybe provide that clarification for us.
All right.
Referencing the bylaws.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Uh, Jamar Lanarian is here. Um, according to Article Three, Section Three Point Two, Election of President and Vice President, Secretary and Treasurer, it reads, and I quote, "At the last regular or special meeting of each academic year, the board shall elect a President of the Board and a Vice President of the Board from amongst the members of the Board pursuant to the rules established from time to time by the Board." The President of the Board and Vice President of the Board shall each hold the office for one calendar year until a successor has been elected. Neither the Board President nor Vice President of the Board shall be allowed to serve more than two consecutive terms. And as we know, just from, um, the Superintendent of the Agency selected by the Board, um, shall serve as Ex officio Secretary. And I'm just reading this just so that we can make sure we don't, we, we have the full story here. Um, he see, he she shall have the powers and functions assigned by the Board, amongst which shall be the authority with the President of the Board to authenticate and verify official documents of the Board and submit agenda items for consideration by the Board. Uh, the Superintendent is not a member of this Board by, by virtue of his office. So, it lists the Secretary and Treasurer of the Board. Um, they have their, and this is Article Three, um, Four Point Five and Section Three Point Five respectively. Let's see. But Three Point One, it says that the Office of the Agency shall be chosen by the Board Directors and shall, shall consist of a President, Vice President, Secretary, Treasurer, and such officers as may be appointed within, with accordance of this article, which is Article Three. So it looks like pursuant to what we have, until this amended, uh, we are required to have a President, Vice President, Secretary, uh, Treasurer. So it looks like that person can be the same individuals. It doesn't look like it's, it's bifurcated at this point. Um, so it looks like it's a mandatory of, of three officers.
Thank, thank you for that clarification. So obviously, when the next meeting agenda is, uh, compiled, uh, we'll want to include Secretary Treasurer in addition to President and Vice President.
And just, just as a, um, point of information, I'm sorry.
Uh, Mr. Ennis, please continue.
One thing that we must navigate is that, uh, setting up the agenda, because per our bylaws, it states that the Board President, um, who shall be elected, is the person that select, that puts together the agenda. So I guess the question is, what do we do? Um, and maybe that's a question for Board Counsel in the interim, um, given that we don't have any, any persons in that capacity to set the agenda.
Right, so, so I would, I would think, you know, as I stated previously, that this should be part of the discussion, you know, taken to, uh, state government leadership. Uh, this, this is one of the hurdles that we have in place, is, um, we have a vacancy for the Board President, who has significant responsibilities. Uh, fundamentally, part of that is, uh, preparing the agenda for the meeting. So if we can get, uh, some feedback from state, uh, government leaders, appreciate the situation that we're in, and we can get that question answered.
And respectfully, uh, Jamar Ennis again, um, I, I see some things that we can clean up in our bylaws to make things so much easier to conduct business, so that we can... And look, I guess the silver lining of all this is that since we've been through some extraordinary times, we could put some extraordinary measures to ensure that we can get back on course, um, by operation of our bylaws. So, so I think that in, while we're going through all this, I think we could all create some suggestions moving forward. For, uh, for instance, uh, let's go back to the, um, the, the, um, Board Appointments. I think that's something, um, that the Secretary Treasurer can easily stay on top of. Um, and that kind of fits well in, in those roles to where they can just, um, give updates, even if it's every meeting, to say that, look, we have no issues with compliance at this time, or if we do, let's get it all out so we can make it a team sport. Um, so as we're kind of looking at, um, the officers, we, maybe we can have more define roles, what, what the President does, Vice President does, so on and so forth. So, um, it, it doesn't have to be, uh, necessarily a, a bad thing if we don't, if we could make it into something positive, is what I'm saying. So let's, let's focus on doing that too.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that. So we have clarification on the, uh, on the officers, uh, as well as excellent recommendation, uh, to define those roles and responsibilities going forward. We, we all recognize there is room for improvement in everything we do, so I appreciate the positive attitude and, and the approach to that. There, there's also consideration here, uh, going forward. It's mentioned in the agenda for, uh, again, going back to your comments, Mr. Ennis, uh, for potential for the term to be extended for two years. Uh, so I think that'll be a, a good conversation going forward as well. Want board members to give that, give that some thought a, as we await the next meeting. Uh, next item I have is, uh, Fiscal Twenty-Six Budget. Um, is there someone that's prepared to present that? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Delvickio Piku. I am the Executive Director of a Business and Finance, um, and I'm here to do the Fiscal Year Twenty-Six Budget. Um, unfortunately, we don't have a quorum. One of the things that the bylaws state is that we have to get our budget, um, a resi, we have to do a resolution for our, us to spend our budget. And so since we don't have that, um, quorum yet to do the resolution, um, I'm gonna move forward on that. School starts in fourteen days. Um, so you can imagine the position that I'm in, uh, with all the things that we have to do. Last board meeting, I promised the board that I would do analysis on, uh, the financials, uh, going forward. I'm gonna continue to do that. I don't have that for you today. Um, it will be available for you for our next board meeting. And that's just because we are in the middle of state closeout right now. Um, and everything is just closing out for Fiscal Year Twenty-Five. So by eight fourteen, we have to have the, the, the state closeout completely done. And so that'll, that'll fall right into our next meeting, um, that we have so that we'll be able to tell you how we fared, uh, for Fiscal Year Twenty-Five. Um, let's see. Um, I just wanna let the board know that some of the federal funds have been paused, uh, for right now, so we don't, uh, know what our budget is gonna be, fully be for federal funds. That impacts our district. Um, hu, it hugely impacts our district because we rely on federal funds to do a lot of the things that we do. Um, so we'll be having more information. Um, I feel like it's gonna, you know, it's gonna dissipate and it's gonna go away, but that's just me, I'm just hopeful like that. Um, so we'll have more information about that until further notice what's gonna happen with our federal dollars. Um, we do have an active AG opinion, um, that has been submitted up to the AG's office regarding spending here. Um, one of the things that I've found since I've been here is that we have not transitioned over into being a state agency. And so that, that creates issues when we're talking about how, uh, public dollars are spent. Um, so we have requested, uh, a, a AG's opinion because we do have some barriers there, uh, regarding how we spend funding, um, on certain things, and so we're waiting for that to come back. Um, Dr. Martin signed off on that about maybe two weeks ago, or a week ago, and that's been, uh, sent off to the AG's office. Um, I understand that we don't have a for, a quorum, and I understand that we are trying to move forward like we're moving forward now. But, um, I also wanna just say for the record that Dr. Martin's last day officially is July twenty-third, which is in two days. And once his delegate, once that happens, the delegation authority drops. So ev, the signature authority drops by law, it's by statute, it drops. And so now I have a problem, because I'm working on contracts, I'm working on closeout, I'm working on all these things that need signatures. We can't pay bills, we can't pay, we can't do certain things. So I would like to ask the board, um, you know, just for a path forward on what you want us to do with that. Um, because that's, that's just something that, you know, we can't turn in documents that can't be signed.
So, so I like, I'm happy to speak to that one. Um, I do have an email from Dr. Martin where he delegated signature authority, uh, to Ms. Rawls in his absence. Um, my, my understanding that, um, that that would continue to be in place unless it was changed. I'm, I'm not aware of any change, and we would need a, I'm assuming we would need a new superintendent in place to make any change. So I'm, I'm assuming that Ms. Rawls, who ha, currently has that signature authority, that that authority would continue, um, in, in the absence of Dr. Martin.
Respectfully, that's, that's, and Whitney, can you speak to that? That's not, um, that's, unfortunately, that's, once the superintendent's resignation goes away, all of the delegations go away. That, that's what I'm trying to speak to. So how do we fix that?
Hi, this is Whitney Green. I'm Executive Counsel for the District, and I'm seeing Ms. Rawls back there shaking her head, and I'm shaking my head. Everyone is. The superintendent's contract had a ninety-day notice provision that should've been adhered, that would've taken us into next year. I don't know why that wasn't adhered to. Dr. Martin would still be here to carry us through. Um, but he submitted his resignation effective, originally it was July the sixth. It was extended until the twenty-third. After the twenty-third, his delegation of authority dies, and we will have an operational void.
Question.
Okay, so, um, I'd like to recognize Mr. Ennis.
Uh, this is Jamar Ennis. Um, is there a, a flow chart, or organizational chart? I mean, is there any kind of playbook that can internally rely on? That, um, has, and when, has this happened before?
Never. We have only been a state agency until, since twenty-twenty-one, the middle of twenty-twenty-one. Our board wasn't even seated until November of twenty-twenty-one. Um, to my knowledge, Dr. Martin did not ever appoint a Deputy Superintendent. All the Executive Directors are on the level altogether, right underneath him. The only person I know that has the title of Assistant Superintendent, and it's of SSP, is Dr. Lewis. But she's still on the org chart, along with everybody else. I don't know how you would solve that. But that's the only person, when I pull what is in Leo right now, that has the designation of Assistant Superintendent.
Can we, doesn't, doesn't Dr. Martin have two days left?
Two days, that's it.
So, so couldn't, wouldn't one approach be to address Dr. Martin directly within those two days and, and ask him to appoint the appropriate individual who would have the authority to serve in that capacity?
He doesn't have the authority to appoint. He'd only have it for two days. Only the board would, and any delegation that he would make would die upon his departure. And that's been, that's a, a legal opinion that's been given by Rodell.
I got a question. So maybe, um, so I know that our system is very unique. It's, this district is very unique, um, probably the most unique in the state. It's, uh, governed by a state statute. But is there any way that we can kind of draw up on maybe what the traditional school systems may have done in situations like this? Um, I, I, I don't, um, I, I, I believe that maybe this is where we need, maybe need to kind of go outside ourselves to find solutions that work, that are legal. Um, because yeah, this is a situation where, um, children, I don't want academic placement to be disrupted. Um, there's, there's a lot at state. So, so effective, we move forward without signing authority, as you say, or, or, or leadership. What happens?
So, this is Delvickio Piku. In my experience, in my stated experience, um, normally, that would go to the division, uh, when you don't have leadership, for them to appoint leadership. Um, the authority, when it drops in two days, it's, you're just, you're just stuck unless somebody has to be appointed. And so, of course, at, being a state agency, we have so many things that we have to submit up financially right now, that I don't, I don't know how that, that looks. I, I don't even have an answer for this, I mean, I don't, I don't.
So first of all, thank you for bringing it to our attention, right? But the one question I do have is, is, is this a standalone appointment concern, or what about other appointments, you know, in specific job positions or whatnot that Dr. Martin has made? Would, would those also not be in place?
Right, because.
So every decision that he made in his, in his tenure is null and void? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Not in his tenure. Everything, that, every decision that he made prior to him exiting on July twenty-third, that decision of authority, it drops because he's the only person that can appoint that for right now.
I'm trying to understand why this particular position would be different than any other position.
Because when you don't have the, the signature authority for state business, you can't do anything. It, it requires that you have sig, the, the division of administration requires that you have signature and appointing authority to sign off and run the business of the.
So I, I understand that concept. What I'm trying to understand is why that particular role is unique relative to other roles that the superintendent appoints.
What you, I don't, I don't, I don't.
So, so, so if I'm this, so let's say you're the superintendent, okay, because I don't wanna be the superintendent. If you were the superintendent, right, and you're making a decision to appoint an individual who has the signing authority, that's one decision that you make. If you have to make another decision that I want Ms. Jones to be the department head over speech and learning, that's another decision that you made to appoint her to that position. My question is, if we're saying that one of these positions goes away upon the resignation of the superintendent, does, does the other position also become vacant? Why, why would one be different than the other?
I think, this is Whitney Green again, executive counsel. I think the best way that I can describe this is that, like I noticed on today's agenda, one of the executive sessions was to discuss the acting interim superintendent. We do not have an acting interim superintendent. We have a delegation of authority that Dr. Martin gave to Ms. Nancy Rawls, and she did a great job, and in her absence, it would have fallen to Scott Whitford, who is our general counsel. And we have a legal opinion from Rodell Parsons that basically equates it to like a power of attorney. It dies upon the termination of Dr. Martin's employment. As far as his appointments to make Dell, or, you know, hire her as the business office person, the things that he made in an employment capacity will survive, but his appointing authority will not, because he can't delegate that to somebody if he's not there. And because we don't have a board, we don't have a quorum, we won't have an acting interim superintendent. Ms. Rawls has never been that, and she knows that, I know that. She has always just had the delegation of Dr. Martin's authority. When he no longer works here, that authority goes away.
So she, she's, she's been in the backfilling role?
She's just been in a delegation of authority for signing things. She's not been in there to hire and fire, she's not been any of that stuff.
Got it, understood.
She's just been able to sign stuff.
Understood, understood, okay. So let's go back to Ms. Piku now, if you could help us, you know, with the regard to the messaging that Mr. Ennis and Rodell Parsons would take to the appropriate level of state government. With, with this news, how does that affect business operation of the school in day three?
It's, it's a huge effect on us. We can't do anything. We have contracts for speech therapy, we have contracts for interpreters, we have contracts for virtual school services that'll impact our students, because some of them get virtual, you know, teaching done. We have all kinds of, we have our, our board stuff that we, that's gonna impact. This SSA consultant, if we want to get that impacted, we can't do anything without somebody having that signing authority to sign off on things.
Okay, so, so I'd like to request, if you could compile that list, and, and then present that list to Mr. Ennis and Mr. Bourgeois, so they can appropriately present the concern at the appropriate state government level. Could you handle that for us?
Sure.
Thank you, and obvi, obviously we'd wanna get that out as soon as possible.
Yes, sure.
Thank you. Ms. White, you had a question or comment?
Yes, concerning the organization chart, has there been a change in that org chart since Dr. Martin has been here, or that has, that existed prior to him?
There was a change in the org chart, from my understanding. It wasn't, all of the executives were not under the superintendent. I think they were principals of schools, I'm not exactly sure, I wasn't here, but I do know that Dr. Martin did change the structure. The structure of this, the structure of this district has been changed.
And my other question, if there was a change, could Dr. Martin, if he made that change, could he make that reverse or make a different change to the organization chart prior to July third, twenty-third?
He could, because he is still the superintendent until July twenty-third.
Yeah, so, so that goes back to my previous question, if we, if he changes, if he changes the org chart within the next two days, then why couldn't there be a, a person in the position, right, to, to make those authorized purchases and contract signatures and whatnot?
Because when you change, and, and Mary may be able to speak to this better, our HR director, it does, it's not, it's not that easy to just say, hey, you're now gonna be the deputy superintendent or whatever, i- if that's what you're asking me. He can't just, and especially being that he's gone, basically, he's, he's on leave without pay, there's so many issues, and Mary come up, Mary may be able to explain how that works. Mary is our HR director.
Thank you for that, and, and thank you, Mary.
Mary Gloucester, human resource director. To make an organizational chart change, now you're talking about impacting the entire organization, it's not just a matter of moving people here and there, you're talking about positions, position duties, you're talking about jobs, you're talking about pay that may be associated with it, and as state employees, our pay is a right. So you have to be very cautious to make a rash decision to make an organizational chart change in two days, is not a very prudent move and would not be recommended. It would be looked upon very badly by the Louisiana legislative auditor and the commissioner's office, commissioner of administration's office. So we have to be very careful about org chart changes this quickly.
I, I would agree with that, but I would also recognize that the superintendent's still under contract for two more days, and he has responsibilities within that contract to maintain appropriate staffing. So I, I guess I would, again, just go back to Mr. Ennis and Rodell Parsons, and, and ask that they follow up on this immediately at the appropriate level of state government with a list from, from staff at the site, so that the appropriate level of government can appreciate the severity of the situation, as well as timeline that, that we have here with only two days to work with. Mr. Ennis?
I'll make myself available for the rest of the day, and, and would, if we do do things in email, I'd like to include all of the board members, so that at least we're collective, and, so that you're included, so, so that everybody knows what's going on, because I know you've been around for a long time, you've seen some things. So it's gonna take all of us to really create a situation that gets us out of this thing that we're dealing with. But I do have to ask, does anybody have the current org chart?
I, I do.
Okay, okay, can, uh, do you have it present with you?
No.
Okay, thank, I'd like to know what it says, because at, at some point, we have to move in good faith here to, because this is almost like force majeure, where it's a extraordinary event, or we, we have to do something.
Right, and, and I just want to retract my previous request, that you get back to us in seven days, and, and request that, actually, if you could get back with us by end of day today.
Yeah, so, so here's what I'm saying by the end of day, because tomorrow, my department, the governor's office of disability affairs, we're hosting a three-day conference, three days, where my attention is gonna be focused on twenty different, unique topics to where we're hosting, a, a pretty large, it's probably the biggest event that we're gonna have during the year. It was supposed to start today, but I had to move it back so I can be here today. So, so respectfully, while, while my brain and, and attention is still focused on the district, I, I just would love to kind of exhaust what I have in the remaining hours of today to at least figure out how we can work together to, to get what we need to get done.
Great, so, so we, I just wanna ask the question, so we can expect some feedback by end of day today, is that fair?
Yeah, so, so we'll, we'll all get together and don't go anywhere after we meet, so we can at least know, understand what we're gonna need to do once we leave, leave campus today. But we, we should all be included as, as a board, if we're, if we're gonna do anything, like especially email, so we're at least all in the know.
Great, great, so, so bottom line, the expectation here is that you'll provide some follow-up communication with us by end of day today, and then with that information, we can talk about options for next steps.
Okay, and again, the concern is, I'm sorry.
The concern is operation of the school in, in day three.
Yeah, but just to recap, I think it's.
Mr. Ennis?
I think it's very important that everybody in this room understands, I guess, the summary of what we have, the issue. Dr. Martin's term is expiring in, on July twenty-third, so we need to figure out who's gonna be the signing authority, or who's gonna be in leadership until the board meets. Is, is there any other, anything I'm missing, other than, than that synopsis?
I, I think that's clearly critical path, right? That, that's step number one, it's got the highest priority possible, when you think about the operation of the school, the children that are impacted, the staff, and obviously a lot of that is dependent on purchasing and, and a human and material resources. So obviously, the highest priority possible at the appropriate government level, and if we could get feedback on what those options are by end of day, that would be the expectation.
And it'll be a good help for us if anybody that's, any directors or anything that has a decision, like maybe they could make us a list of what has to be done, so the board members can get a further good appreciation of what is needed, why is needed, because even the people that we're gonna ask questions of, they, they may ask, okay, and it may be a, a silly question, but why is this important? Well, we, we can give them a list of things that need to be done and accomplished.
I think the business office is gonna provide that list, right?
Yeah, so, so we know what we're talking about.
And you'll be able to provide that list today, so Mr. Ennis will have it available?
Yes, I'll go work on it.
Okay, and, and if you could send it to everybody, just don't send it to me.
Yeah, I'll send it out to the, this is Delvickio Piku, I'll send it out to all of the executive directors, to give them an opportunity to weigh in on what their high priority needs are, and I'll also add my own to that, and then we'll forward that, and I'll, I'll try to have that, it's ten fifty-six, I'll probably try to have that by at least two PM today. I don't think it should take that long.
Thank you so much, thank you. All right, certainly this is unexpected news, but.
I'm sorry.
Now you're doing your job, and we so appreciate it. Thank you, thank you for reporting like this. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, hearing none, we'll, we'll move on. Thank you so much. Okay, this, this was the last item on the original agenda. I, I think we've covered every, a lot this morning, and, and I think we've got appropriate follow-ups in place. Obviously, critical path here is to address the situation for operation of the schools at day three, and we've asked Mr. Ennis and Rodell Parsons to follow up, again, at the appropriate level of state government, helping those officials to appreciate the dire situation that we're in with, with the, with the list that staff is gonna prepare. I think, I think that's enough said, unless there's any other additional comment, we'll, we'll close out the meeting. Hearing none, just thank everyone again for coming out, and we'll look to hear something from Mr. Ennis by end of day today. Thank you.
So what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call.